City of Stevens Point Special Common Council Meeting, recorded December 2nd, 2025.
Two o'clock, we will call this Special Common Council Meeting to order. A couple of points of business before we start the business. The reason we're having a meeting at noon on a Tuesday has some unusual circumstances. We didn't plan on this. We planned on addressing item number five at our regular Plan Commission meeting and Council meeting, but that, at the request of the owner, was postponed, and at that point, we left it. The item number six is here because we put together a verbal agreement with the owner of the property and the partnering together group, and we wanted to move on as quickly as possible because they need time to do some remodeling inside that building to make it acceptable by our inspection department and the code to be used as a 365-day warming center. So, when that happened, I asked the Clerk's Office to contact the Alders to see if we could do a special meeting just to consider the grant program and that establishment of the 365 shelter. After that meeting was already established, we determined that we needed to meet a deadline of December 5th for a grant which will be used in conjunction with item number five, should it be approved. If it's not approved, then that is irrelevant, but the grant deadline is Friday. Rather than having two special meetings at different times, we, I, chose to just piggyback it onto this one. So, I know that's inconvenient for a lot of people, and I hope, judging from the audience that we have here, we're probably, we're still in good attendance. I know we've got some testimony at the last meeting, and we don't have a sign up here, you'll notice that, too. Whoever's going to speak at those items will just be able to go up to the lectern and speak. Oh, is there a sheet going around? Look at that. There is a sheet going around. So, when you get up to the lectern to testify on any of the items, please state your name clearly and your address, just in case we have to refer back to the video, to get that done. We have three people in the waiting room. I miss Mary. I had Mary here last night trying to, trying to keep an eye on all of these things that happen to pop up sometimes, but... So, the process today, we have one item, item number two, which will be an open session that we will likely go into closed session, at which point, we will put everybody online in the virtual waiting room, and everybody in the physical room will have to be outside of the room. While we deliberate with Council on the two items in number three, once we're done with that, we will reconvene into open session. The people in the virtual waiting room will be allowed back in. The people here in person will be allowed back in, and then we will move on to items number five and six. Does anybody have any questions on how the process is going to work today? I know it's a little weird, but this is pretty non-traditional, so I just want to make sure everybody understands it. All right, so, the first thing we'll do is a roll call. Clerk, could I get a roll, please?
Kristiansen.
Here.
Guthrie.
Present.
Keimer.
Here.
Broderick.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Steinmetz. No Steinmetz. Shuda.
Here.
Lang.
Here.
Boozy.
Here.
And Maro.
So, we have two absent.
Two absent. We have eight.
Okay, we have a quorum, so we can continue. Did either of the two people who are absent...
They did not.
They didn't reply that they couldn't make this one?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so they will be marked absent, and we will continue on. The first one is an appointment. We had a resignation from the Plan Commission due to the time constraints from Doug Miskoviac. We would like to appoint Laura Shade Struck to that position, filling the unexpired term, which will expire April 30th of 2027. Information was included in the Council packet. Ask for your consideration and approving it.
So, move.
Thank you. Second to my Lang. Discussion on the appointment? Anyone? Seeing, hearing, none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Boozy.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
And Kristiansen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Yeah, plenty of seats here. So, at this point, item number three is to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 sub 1 sub E for deliberating and negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing public funds, conducting other specific business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session relating to the following. Two items that we'll be discussing in closed session. Number, or letter A, is negotiating a development agreement on properties in Tax Incremental District 10 related to the Shopko redevelopment site. The other thing we'll be discussing in closed session is negotiating the investment of public funds for the purchase of 2854 Church Street for the purposes of operating a 365-day homeless shelter. I need a motion to go into closed session.
I would move, we move into closed session pursuant to those statutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Second to my Broderick. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll need a roll call, please.
Kristiansen.
Aye.
Guthrie.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Broderick.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Lang.
Aye.
And Boozy.
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session. I'll ask everybody who's not city staff to leave the room, please. An open session. We have two items to discuss and act on in open session. Item number five is discussion of possible action on a development agreement between the City of Stevens Point, the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Stevens Point, and Commonwealth Development Corporation for redevelopment on a portion of Main Street, the former Shopko site, with the parcels identified in your packet. Director Kivalek, can I have you come to the lectern and kind of state what the proposal before us is?
Of course. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So, just want to run over the high points of what the proposal that is in front of you is and contains. So, currently, we are proposing a development agreement between the City of Stevens Point, Redevelopment Authority, and Commonwealth Development Corporation. This development agreement is for a multifamily housing project on the Shopko redevelopment site. The location is proposed in the northwest corner, so it would be on the corner of Centerpoint Drive and a new roadway, Strong's Union, as we've been calling it. So, original proposal that was before you at one time was in the southeast, but we have now moved that to the northwest to solve for comments that we have been hearing from the public. This development is a Lytec project, affordable housing project. It would be 50 units reserved for residents earning 30, 50, and 80% area median income. It does also include a 6,000-square-foot community servicing facility that we are looking at a partnership with the university's Child Care Learning and, or Child and Learning, Child Learning and Care Center to occupy that space. The development itself would take up approximately 1.3 acres of the approximate seven acres that will be available for redevelopment. Construction is set to start no later than September 1st, 2027, and complete no later than January 1st, 2029. The proposal that we are looking at would also have, it'd be four stories. It would have first-floor parking for a total of 76 approximately parking stalls. We are working with the developer to see if we can find a couple more on-site, find efficiencies within the parking lot layout, spacing, green space, islands, things like that, to still ensure it meets our code, but that we are maximizing parking both on-site. And as a note, as we look to redo our streets in that area, we will also look to find the maximum amount of on-street parking there as well to alleviate, again, concerns we are hearing from the public.
Director, the number of parking spots privately on-site in the proposal is how many?
Seventy-six minimum.
Or how many units?
Fifty.
Okay, so more than one per unit, where, what is that, somewhere about 1.3 per unit of private parking on-site?
Yep.
Okay. And then, the incentive from the city in that regard?
City is set to provide an incentive of 1.45 million in TIF support, 50% upon completion, and the other 50% once they have the occupancy permit.
All right, does anyone on Council have questions for the Director before we bring it to the public? Okay, good, because we just talked about it for an hour. The proposal before you is taking into account the testimony that we've heard prior to this. There were, the biggest concerns were the location. Being on Main Street, there was a strong sentiment that the Main Street property should be reserved for business, commercial. So, we did that. We moved the project to the opposite corner of the property. The other concern that many people had was the number of parking spots that would be taken up. Parking downtown, depending on who you are and where you are and what your beliefs are, can be challenging for some. People really like to feel the need to park right in front of that building that they're going to, and if they have to walk a block, well, that's too far. So, this minimizes the number of parking spots that would be affected publicly and giving the units about 1.3 parking spots per unit, which is right in line with whatever every other requirement is for a development in the city. So, with that, I will open it up to the public comments. Step to the lectern, name and address, and then provide those comments, please. Anyone in person? Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Common Council. My name is Deb Knippel, and I'm here on behalf of Frame Memorial Presbyterian Church, 1300 Main Street, and as a citizen of Stevens Point, 611 Sumery Avenue. So, I do, am here to express support for the inclusion of all the mixed-income apartments in this Commonwealth Development proposal for the former Shopko property that we've been discussing. Housing is a fundamental human need and a key step to eradicating systemic poverty. I also support the inclusion of a daycare center as safe and reliable. Childcare is critical for maintaining stable employment for families with children. According to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, families that pay more than 30% of their monthly income for housing are considered housing cost burdened. Based on data gathered from the U.S. Census, 43% of renter-occupied housing units in Stevens Point pay over 30% of their household income towards rent. I was not able to find any statistics for unhoused individuals and families in Stevens Point who are struggling to find adequate housing, but we all know that this is a reality. So, mixed-income housing helps to reduce poverty and improves living conditions for individuals and families. Appreciate all the efforts to ensure that mixed-income housing is included in this proposal, and I support it.
Thank you. We'll go online, just because it's the applicant or the representative of Commonwealth. Tyler, unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. We just would like to thank you, Mayor, and Council members for your consideration this afternoon. Also, would like to show appreciation to both Jared and Chris for the continued back-and-forth here. This development has evolved significantly since our initial proposal was in response to the RFP, and ultimately proud of where this has landed, but I think it's, kind of demonstrates Commonwealth's willingness to continue to tailor this development to meet community needs, you know, understood that there are items such as parking that may need to be flushed out at a later date, but very happy with where things have landed, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Tyler, and I'd ask that you stick around just in case we have some further questions. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Anyone else in person first that would like to provide some comments? Step on up.
Thank you, Mr. Weesa. My name is B.J. Welling. I'm a property owner downtown, and I am concerned about the parking, and I'm not sure, I don't know if I can ask questions here, but...
Absolutely.
The north side yard, when that was designed, what was that designed for parking-wise per apartment?
So, we have former Director Ryan Kornowski here, who was involved heavily in that. Our current director was not. Ryan, can I get you to come up here and talk about that a little bit, or is that, I mean, since you're not getting paid for it anymore?
Well, North Side Yard was a bit of an interesting project. First, the Lullaby Site had sat vacant for about 20 years before the city had acquired it and gone through the process of sending on RFPs for a market rate project. And the goal of the council at the time, which the council in 2019 is completely different from the council that's sitting here this afternoon, there was a real concern that we should be getting away from what's known as induced parking demand, that if you provide parking, it will encourage people to own cars, it will discourage them from using public transportation or the ability to walk or bike to work, to home, wherever it might be. And so, the council was looking at a number of different things at that point, but the one being that we wanted the biggest return on investment in terms of the number of units per acre, and for that property, I think it's 50 units per acre. I don't have a recollection of the total number of parking stalls for that project off the top of my head, but I know it was well underparked from what our zoning code would typically require, you know, during that time. I don't know if the new zoning code's been adopted or not, but the zoning code from 1979 had a very differing opinion on parking as opposed to what was approved in 2018, 2019.
Yeah, I think it was like one and a half stalls per unit.
Is the minimum required, yeah.
The minimum required.
Yeah.
North Side Yard was definitely under that because the council's desire at the time was to disincentivize automobiles. We're still dealing with the challenges of that decision. This, however, I think addresses it. We're at about 1.3, so it's pretty close to that. So, thank you, former Director Kornowski.
Yeah, and I should just clarify, the zoning code that it was adopted under, the number of bedrooms in each unit determines the number of parking stalls. So, I think it was one bedroom required, one, two was, I think, 1.25, and then three was one and a half, and I don't know if Chris or Jared, if I'm correct on those numbers, it's been a number of years since I've been a zoning administrator. Certainly close. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
I guess what I'd like to say is, it seems like right now, it would be very easy to quantify the number of lots that are being used by North Side Yard residents just by the parking spaces that the city's given them in that one lot.
Not given, we lease them.
Okay, those, I mean, those are kind of used by them, and then...
Yes, they are exclusively rented by them.
All the cars on the street...
Right.
Can certainly be quantified, and I really suggest that that's done before you guys set a number on parking spaces because it's real. I mean, it is a problem for everybody else downtown.
Thank you. Anyone else? Huh, Ryan, look at that.
Sorry. Okay, I'll come back up here. Ryan Kornowski, 717 Ridge Road in Stevens Point, not Village Park Ridge. I guess the main concern that I've had, and I've expressed this to members of the Council previously, well, first and foremost is the incentive. You know, it's presented, from what I know, and this, again, you went into a closed session, you were coming out of a closed session, expected to take action, when the public hasn't had the opportunity to take a look at what the newest iteration of the development agreement is. So, I think on that front alone, I think the public deserves additional time to review the development agreement. In particular, I know Director Kivalek said that there was a $1.45 million incentive. However, what does that look like in terms of the pro forma for the TIF district? And that was a concern that I had expressed previously in the fact that the TIF wasn't being made whole. In fact, the TIF was subsidizing this project additionally to the tune of about $38,000 annually. Now, TIF number 10 is heavily subsidized by TIFs 5 and TIF 9. TIF 5 being the north side of Stevens Point, that encompasses Century Insurance, and TIF District number 9 being the Portage County Business Park and East Park Commerce Center to the tune of about $400,000 in 2024. Those two TIFs provided the additional funding at that time. At the end of 2024, the fund balance of TIF number 10 was in the negative by roughly $300,000. This only compounds that problem, right? And although we've mentioned that, well, we've just, we're moving the building from the corner of Main and Church to the corner of Centerpoint in what is the Strong's Union Extension, that's a significant shift, one that I'm supportive of, and I, since even my tenure with the City of Stevens Point, I was always an advocate for having low-modern income housing mixed with market rate, and that hasn't changed. The concern I have is when you take that building from the corner that it was originally proposed at, relocate it to the opposite corner, then it comes along with a number of infrastructure challenges, right? The extension of Strong's and Main, I'm sorry, not Strong's, Main, Strong's and Union, and the extension of College Court from Strong's Avenue to Church Street is a significant investment that the TIF is going to have to take on. Now, if there isn't any money left over, meat on the bone, if you will, from this project for the TIF, how are we going to financially afford those types of infrastructure improvements, right? And I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. Every project that comes before you, as a good rule of thumb and as a best practice, should pay for itself. There should not be a situation in which this council or this community looks at these projects and says, "Well, we're willing to subsidize it on top of what's already being proposed," in terms of the incentive. Because it is, it's another form of incentive to the tune of about $907,000 a year. When you look at the original proposal, right, about a $5 million assessment, you have the 1.45, you add the $900,000 on top of that, you have $2,350,000 as your incentive. Your ratio is almost 47%. That should be a serious concern to this body and should not be something that's taken lightly, and in fact, I would encourage you to vote no on it. I think this project, similar to other Lytec projects that we've approved in the past, the Berkshire project took us a year and a half to get to this point, right? The convent took over two years for us to get to this point. We're rushing this project, and we're not including all the important stakeholders that this will impact, especially the downtown businesses, who I'm certain will express their own concerns of this. So, that's my perspective. It hasn't changed much in the following weeks, but the fact that the public hasn't had the opportunity to review a physical development agreement should be serious concern for this body, and I would encourage you to, at a minimum, table this for a few days until the public has the opportunity to review the development agreement before rushing to Redevelopment Authority and having them approve a development agreement at 3:00. So, thank you.
Thank you, Professor Kornowski. I like that. Corey, could I get, I'm sorry. Because that is a big concern, and that was an item of lengthy discussion in closed session as well. Talk about the current status of TIF 10, the concerns your office has, and the ideas that your office is suggesting.
Sure, so, TIF 10 is certainly getting better than it was, so it's definitely improving in terms of performance. The other thing, you know, as far as if the council wants to go forward with this development agreement, we do have the ability to transfer money from TIF District 9, so that is an option. So, overall, if you look at our TIFs and their overall status, their overall status is pretty good, and we do have the ability to transfer money between TIFs. So, if the council decides that it's worth, you know, taking the loss on this investment, there are ways to fund that within our existing TIF districts.
And do you have concerns regarding our either debt capacity, capacity of the TIF for any of the infrastructure improvements that were proposed?
So, I don't have concerns in terms of debt capacity, and I don't have, you know, it's a policy decision, obviously, as far as if we want to make the investment in this project and if we're willing to take a loss on this project, but if we decide that it's, the benefits are enough to justify the project and justify taking a loss, then we do have the capacity to support this project.
Thank you very much. Let's start with Keith, because Keith has been waiting. All right, Jerry, come on up. I know, we still need you at the microphone, because otherwise, nobody at home can hear us.
Relax, Mike. Gerald Farner, 12315 Acadia Lane, Lake Duflambeau. I'm the owner of the Executive Place Building. Most of you are aware there was a develop agreement in 2007. In order to get a building permit, the city agreed to give us parking. We got a three-story building that can hold 160 people, and now you want to take away our parking we've had for 17 years. I did see the new plan. It's improved somewhat. My concern is, what are you doing with that area that's not mentioned in that plan? If that's going to remain parking, we probably don't have an issue, but if that becomes more buildings, we got an issue. This parking's been a problem for a long time, back in 2009, and, believe me, I've been scouring minutes of meetings that are 17 years old, and Mike, when they were going to buy the mall, he said, "Jeez, that's not, that's a lot of money, but the only good thing is, we're going to end up with some parking." And then Mayor Mr. Halverson said, in that same meeting, said, "We need a parking ramp. We need $4.3 million for a parking ramp." We still don't have a parking ramp, and we still have a parking problem, and now we're going to have more of a parking problem because if you have 100 apartments and they're, now it's, I guess it's per stall, per bedroom, I think we really don't know the number of cars that's going to produce. At any given day, when I do account on that existing parking lot, it's between 122 is my lowest end, and my biggest end was 156, except for Good Friday. You couldn't find a parking spot anywhere in town. As you all know, when you drive into town, if you want to go for breakfast or lunch, wooden chair, booze, whatever, cars are circling, waiting for somebody to pull out. Sure, do you have to walk a block? You bet, but I think in a lot of cases, they're walking more than a block. So, I'm going to hold you to the agreement that you were furnishing me parking except for the 60 stalls in front of Shopko. And one other thing I wouldn't like to mention, and I might, could be wrong on the math, that's why Corey, I was Corey, but we paid $1,380,000 for Shopko. We paid a new 100, another $260,000 to demo it, so that's $1,650,000. Where is in, where is this in relationship to what percentage of it is included in the 100, 1.45 million we're going to give these guys? They're buying $1.6 million worth of land for $1? Then really, we're going in the hole way more than the $38,000 a year that Ryan had mentioned. If you leave it a parking lot, we're bringing people to town shopping. You make me a fair offer, I'll buy my own parking from you. Then you can tax me, and day one, you'll be getting revenue. This is never going to see revenue. I'll be dead by the time this sees revenue. I'm 67 years old. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Is there any questions anybody has for me?
Thank you, Jerry, and thank you for pointing out the concerns about parking that Executive Place has. I'll go, I'll go a step further. If you count all the money that we spent condemning the properties to build them all, the incentive to build them all, the incentive to tear them all down, I mean, it, that was a load stone over generations.
But when's the bleeding going to stop, Mike?
I agree.
It's got to stop, okay?
All right. Keith? So, I had a much longer sort of fire and brimstone speech ready, if you were going to come back with the 44 stalls, but, so I appreciate the fact that you've adjusted based on obvious comments and concern, but I would ask, because I think the concern remains for two reasons. One is, half of those 50 units are two- and three-bedroom units. Even at these fixed rent levels, teachers and college students qualify. They all have cars. There's going to be well over 100 people in that... There's going to be well over 100 people in that facility, they're going to have well over 100 cars, so it is going to impact current parking. Is it better? Yes, it's better. But the issue really is that the master plan that the city has developed for the Shopko site simply does not address any sort of dedicated parking for downtown. It just doesn't. It's completely silent, other than to say, we're going to put 200 cars on the street. That's just not a good answer, okay? And I've gone to the listening sessions, everybody asks about parking, the plan doesn't change, we continue to pursue these developments. So yes, we've got one now. I'm waiting for the next two to come to Jerry's point. They'll gobble up the parking. There are going to be buildings there, so it's just a matter of time. So I just ask that you require the city staff to amend that plan, to listen to the people who are telling you, we need dedicated parking going forward, okay?
Thank you very much. And I should point out that when the modified plan was handed over to Jerry Farner, he actually came up with a plan that added a few more spots down there, so we're looking at that one, too. I want to thank you for doing that. Anyone else in-house or in-person wishing to speak? Come on up.
Yeah, I'm Greg Warren, 2321 Jersey Street, and I've lived in Stevens Point off and on, more or less, since 1969, so I've seen a lot of changes here. My main concern is how this project in particular fits into the very big picture, because I've seen any number of other proposals for other lands in downtown Stevens Point and the downtown area of Stevens Point as basically a master plan, including plans that basically eliminate the parking on the riverfront area and turn that into other housing. There was one by Mia LaFond, I believe people saw at one point in time, and I believe it was still accepted and moving forward, last I heard, that will turn all of that into multiple-family housing. I have no problem with the housing, what I have is walling off, walling off Pifner Park from the downtown, even though this project's justification for that particular one claims to create more downtown. And it does seem that the sum total of all these different projects goes to eliminating a lot of parking and in turn substituting a lot of housing. And granted, not all this stuff is probably going to get built, this is all proposals, but it's not just the Shopko area. It's several different areas that we're talking about potentially redeveloping, and it's all open-ended at this point in time. So when you start putting that stuff on top of what's happening at the Center Point, you've got a lot of debt, like people have mentioned, as far as the TIFF districts are concerned, you've got a lot of figuring going on, a lot of pencils, a lot of pencils to be sharpened on that one, and you haven't touched these other projects as part of the big, big picture. You've got to get into this big picture of what you really do intend for the downtown. And some of the things I'm seeing in LaFond's proposal scare the bejeebers out of me, because somebody mentioned the 1970s planning, which was actually discouraging parking, and in a, had a "build it and they will come" attitude, that everybody's going to have a bicycle downtown, everybody's going to walk downtown, and we can choke city streets off a little further, we can redo Center Point, so it's a, it's a narrower two-way street, there's a lot of stuff going on there that I don't know people are necessarily aware of. So what's on the books in the big picture with this project? I have no particular knowledge of, you know, what's going on with the present developer, other than I do appreciate the fact that that got moved off of Main Street, and I do appreciate the fact that it's now open to other development. I've also noticed that some of these projects that are successful with regard to first-floor developments, because I've traveled on the state quite a bit, tend to be in areas of the state that are very gentrified. They're not Stevens Point. Their income levels do not reflect Stevens Point. And here I'm talking Brookfield, and here I'm talking Wanakee, and these cities have massive development going on, massive tax bases, where they are building new schools, new fire stations, new this, new that, because they have a huge development going on with residential, among other things. Point, we don't necessarily have that. When was the last time we soaked up, you know, 100 acres or more farmland overnight into a project that has been, that is completed within two or three years, and the homes are all, you know, close to $1 million? We don't have that here. We haven't done that here. So how does our tax base then support that kind of thinking that this downtown is going to change and become some kind of a gentrified area with low-income housing? It just, this doesn't, doesn't somehow jive in all the planning. So long range, what the hell, where, where are we, I'm sorry, pardon me, where are we going with all this? Where are we going with this? That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Roslyn from the Rose House, 1140 Clark Street. I was here last month, just saying, I would love some parking, but also downtown is for business and residential second, and this looks like mostly residential with a little bit of business. So again, like we've said, I support this, but not downtown, and I would love to see it somewhere else. And I would love to see the council and just the city in general supporting business. So, thank you.
You. Anyone else in person? Jesus, former Director Kornowski, Professor Ryan.
You can just call me Ryan now. Actually, I do have a quick question. I know with the WEDA, the WEDA tax credits, this is a 9% deal. One is, the federal government requires a 15-year minimum low-income tax credit component. I think the state of Wisconsin requires 30-year minimum, is that correct, Tyler, on a 9% deal?
So just to clarify, it is a 4% deal, but seeking the competitive state credits, so that's what's driving the bus to Friday's deadline. That said, yes, it is a 30-year period, the first 15 years is the compliance, the back 15 is an extended use. So at the end of the day, you're getting affordability for 30 years.
Right, and I would hope that that's codified in the development agreement. But the second thing I had a question on was pertaining to the university's childcare. I know my kids attend UCLCC, and as far as I know, and it being a member of the university community, I don't know if there's been a lot of discussion around the relocation of UCLCC to the downtown site. I don't know if, I saw Jenny Rush is on, if she could speak to if there's an existing agreement between Commonwealth and the university. And the only reason I'm asking this, I know that if there's some agreement that exists already in some form or fashion, there's additional points that can be awarded as part of the application process.
Jenny?
Yeah, so the, there is not a formal agreement between the university and Commonwealth, but we're in support of it, because we are looking to expand our childcare spots for the community. So I don't know if that answers your question, Ryan, but not, not a formal agreement yet, but we're, we've given a letter of support, because we are interested in expanding, and we don't have that opportunity on campus.
Yeah, I think that's just a really important note to have, because I think a lot of the conversation around the 6,000 community-serving facility, a square-foot community-serving facility, has been, well, we're going to provide childcare downtown. And the reality is that there's no guarantee that that will occur yet. And in fact, you know, I remember the Berkshire project was the relocation of ODC, that happened about a year and a half after Berkshire had been constructed, and then with the convent property, Create moved a few months after the convent project had been completed. And so you don't have some that's going to occur immediately, and there's not a real guarantee at this point that there will be a childcare in the downtown area with the relocation from the university to the downtown site. So I think that's an important thing to note, because it feels like it had been a foregone conclusion up until this point, that the university was going to relocate, and it sounds as though that might not necessarily be the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person?
I have one more.
Come on up.
I understand the pressure for deciding by Friday, but I also believe in 2026, there will be grants again.
Anyone else in person?
Yeah, Mr. Kornowski, live at 217 Hummel and on 912 Main Street, which is downtown Stevens Point. My first thing is a parliamentary issue, just on agenda's work. So when the city council agenda came out for this meeting today at noon, it doesn't have any of the new prints on it, of the new look, of how it flops over. Not until the 3 o'clock meeting, which is going to happen this afternoon here in a few minutes, I guess, that's when the plan first kind of comes to light. So how did our city council first get the look at this print then?
They got that through confidential memo, because we were discussing it in closed session right prior to coming back into open session. So that's when the director explained the changes. The confidential memo was sent out the day before yesterday?
Wednesday.
Last week, Wednesday.
Okay. So anybody who'd been reading along and trying to see what's happening at the council meeting, not necessarily knowing about the RDA meeting, they would not see a new plan, so they would not, eh, just boilerplate, whatever, go through. It's not till you go further and recognize that there's a RDA meeting that actually had a new plan, which I'm glad it was there, because I would not have known that either. So that's the first parliamentary issue, I had questions about how that happened that way, and how, again, as mentioned earlier, we didn't get public input prior to Sections 3 for the private deliberation. Now, the two plans, so we got Proposal 1, Proposal 2, so we don't know what the council is going to do, because it says, per the letter from Jared, the common council will review, it's in the minutes, right, for the redevelopment authority, and those that haven't read that yet, it's in the meeting after this, the common council will review the development agreements in closed session until 12:02 prior to the meeting of the redevelopment authority to deliberate on which proposal to carry forward. The following are major points, okay, then it goes on. So the chicken for the egg here goes, and how can you even state this in redevelopment authority when the public didn't even know the council was going to look at that, that print, right? Didn't even know it existed. Yes, I am also in favor of how the plan got flipped. I keep hearing how it leaves the parking open up in the corner for Mr. Farner's property, which per agreements with the city and him on redevelopment. But we keep hearing about business on Main Street. Well, if you look at that plan that the redevelopment authority, this room has not seen this yet unless you have that in your hand. It was in the paper, I believe, I think Mr. Wire had that. But it's not saying we're not giving, making Main Street available for all business now, because it's like 70% is either the property coming through, this plan has a, for the four level, to have the parking structure enter in and out from Main Street, which takes up street parking. Second plan does not do that. Either way, both plans still take up the same 70% of Main Street space. So keeping business first minded, that doesn't help that.
Troy, I think you might be looking at it wrong. The road that you see on the, let's call it the bottom edge of the paper, that I think you, you think is Main Street, is not. That's the extension of Portage.
This is, is this Center Point right here?
That's Center Point, yes.
Here's Main Street here, right?
No.
That's College.
College, that's what it is, I'm sorry. So Main Street isn't on your, your drawing.
Oh, it's not even on print, okay.
This, this is, let's call it the north half of the existing Shopko lot, so where College Avenue comes through over by the post office, that's where this would be. So that, what you have in that drawing effectively takes up the spot that Shopko was on.
Okay.
And the reason that there wasn't anything proposed is because council hasn't made a decision yet on where they want to go. That's the action piece that's going to come after everybody gets a chance to speak.
So I stand corrected, then, so the Main Street verbiage is not on that road?
Main Street isn't even part of this proposal.
Well, that's good.
The entire southern half of the lot effectively is not part of this proposal.
So with that knowledge, I'm glad Main Street is still available. Flip-flop is good with the property. Again, it should be business first, and I asked Corey after the last meeting privately, and I don't know if it's been brought to light yet, is this whole project, are they going to pay into the bid tax for Bid District 1? The entire property will pay bid tax into Bid District 1?
So we had talked about that, and the property would be paying in because of the commercial aspect, is that correct?
Unless it's exclusively used for residential, it would pay.
So the answer, short answer is, unless it's exclusively used for residential, it would be paying into the bid. So with the proposal of the daycare, which is not residential, or any component thereof...
For that daycare space could be other businesses at some point.
It could be, yes.
It's commercial space.
As long as it's not residential, it would pay into the bid.
Correct. All right, I just wanted that to be on record, everybody knowing that if there's 6,000 square feet in there, commercial, that building should be paying into the bid, and the bid needs money. I'm coming to our board meetings and...
Bid is Business Improvement District, for those of you who may not know.
Yeah, because we're all taxpayers downtown, everybody who owns a property downtown that has commercial space pays into that bid taxed. So I'm very supportive if it's going to have bid tax implications also.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who has not spoken yet in person? All right, then I'm going to move to the online, anyone online wishing to speak? Unmute yourself, it's not a good way to, to be recognized, but you can raise a virtual hand, you can, Andrea, go ahead.
Sorry, it took a second to get to the right screen. Andrea Olson, 410 Franklin Street. So when I'm looking at this, again, like some others, people have said, what parcels in the packet? Packet was mentioned, yes, the public didn't get access to that. So our, our packet has no parcels shown in it, no attachments, really. The developmental authority has a presentation-only agenda item also, and I didn't see that there was any presentations attached to there either. So again, it's also presentation-only, meaning no interaction or questions by the public or the people that are on that board. So again, lack of ability for public input. What about the transit center going down there? Because if we're having this much space being used for their development, now you have this much space being used for parking, if that is now staying parking, they might only be using a little bit of the acreage down there, but we have just a little bit of acreage left for a development. And since the Cooper lot that is being used for rental parking, or it's being rented out as parking, which during a different meeting, they had said that that's no longer on the market, where are our additional developments going to go? Like, if that's now parking that we rent out, can we build another place there? No. If this is all parking in the Shopko lot now, and then we put the transit center there, that should be the transit center with a parking garage with residential above it, but that still is not commercial in a business district. We are, have this area that's no longer going to really have any availability for commercial in a business district. But we are getting subsidized housing, which I do agree, we need housing, but not downtown right here. What about also the parking for the staff that would be working in the daycare center? You figure at least 20 staff, so they are not coming and going either. They will be parked there all day long. So a lot of this has been occurring behind closed doors, and there is, like, and yes, we have been planning for downtown for multiple years, but this is getting pushed through. We were told by the mayor in one article that this was just, the December 5th deadline would just, not meeting it, would just reduce the likelihood of the developer getting the grant, not them from preventing it, but then today, we're told that they, this is a deadline that they need to meet. We're getting told many different things, so it seems like this is very, very, very rushed. I don't understand still why the other developments also were ruled out. KG, or KCG does conversions of older buildings, like 1039 Ellis Street that the city wants to raise, which is perfectly structurally sound. It would be a great location to redevelop by KCG with a daycare on the first floor and then apartments up above it. So taking, so putting residential where residential really should be, and continuing with commercial downtown, and then putting City Hall at the Executive Place, which would then increase the value of the lots in Shopko, and maybe for future projects, we wouldn't have to be offering such huge incentives, because the land is more desirable. The last thing that I'm concerned about is the cost per unit of this build, if you take how much it's going to be valued in the end, this is quick and dirty math, 15 million, divided by three, since there's, or three or four, since there's a couple stories. My quick and dirty math ends up being that it's about $200,000 per unit to build this, which, are you willing to do $200,000 per unit? That's the cost of a new... That's the cost of a new single-family house. Why aren't we taking these incentives and using them to be building single-family homes that people could own instead of a lot more rentals? Like, we still have nothing owned downtown, we are putting more residential in a commercial area, and we aren't going to have land available to build, and what incentives could we give anybody else to build downtown? We're putting ourselves in a corner right now for housing, which we need, but at what cost to everybody else in the community?
Thank you. Anyone else online wishing to speak? Okay, last call for anyone online or in person. All right, Tyler, did you want to address any of the concerns that people have brought up?
Yeah, I mean, I guess just for concluding thoughts here, you know, the Shopko area seems like an area of focus for, you know, many members, city staff, RDA members, city council members, past and present. But I think at the end of the day, a comprehensive plan was ultimately drafted and approved for this area, which, you know, does call for housing on the north side, and, you know, believe that this building ultimately achieves that. But we've done so in a strategic way that it does allow for future expansion along Church Street, as well as along Main Street. And I think at the end of the day, this would be a great addition to your downtown community. You know, and I guess the biggest thing to consider here is this is more than housing, and just simply think about all the other benefits that come along with this, you know, including the daycare space, including those that are seeking housing currently with the options not available. And, yeah, that's what I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. A couple of points, one of the speakers mentioned, I think they called it the Cooper lot, I don't know what was meant by that, but I believe that was in reference to the lot north of Center Point Drive and west of North Side Yard, which is currently being partially leased to North Side Yard for parking. City still owns that, we have an agreement to lease those spots with North Side Yard. There's also a termination clause, should we have a development that wishes to go there, that site has its own challenges, because there's a really large crick apparently that was diverted under that property. But in the event that that property would have a developer interested, we have it out, so that's not a be-all and-all for that area for development as well. There was concern about the cost, I don't know what the math was there on the construction costs, I'd be happy to have anybody build me a single-family home for $200,000, that would be great, I could move in this week. The incentive is high, and that's something that the council's gonna have to make a decision on policy-wise, because of the need that every housing study we've ever had has shown us, is this the right place? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but those are policy discussions that the council's going to have to talk about. So, I'm gonna bring it back to the council at this point for discussion, continuing on what we talked about in closed session, of course, everything is still very much on the table. So, what are your thoughts? I know we've got a few Alders online too, so if any Alders online want to speak, just unmute yourself and...
I can start if you want.
Happy to have anybody start.
Anybody start. There's, I go back and forth, it addresses some needs that we just need to do in the city, with the affordable housing, childcare, start developing the site as a whole. But, I do have questions if it fits the big scheme of things. It was mentioned by a gentleman up here about the whole, the whole future. Does it really fit? If we have a circle, it just feels to me like we have a lot of squares that we're trying to squeeze into the circle and hope that things come out okay. So, with that being said, I'm just wary of the, even though it provides some immediate things that we all feel happy about, I don't, I just, I just think it has too many squares and not enough round pieces.
Alder Christiansen?
I appreciate the comments that have come across the last six weeks or so on the various meetings. I also appreciate the fact that the developers, I think, done a good job of taking a lot of those concerns into consideration, and I think the plan that we have before us to consider is a much stronger proposal than what we initially saw with the first request for proposals response. I do think that it does tick a lot of boxes, I'm glad that parking's been taken into consideration, I'm glad that the footprint allows for that number of parking spaces to take place and won't be impacting the rest, the existing surface parking that's in that area. I like the fact that it only takes up 18% of that whole lot. We do have other developments that'll probably end up happening, but we'll take, we need to take things one at a time. I like the fact that it does have a variety of apartments that'll be available, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. I like the fact that it's a variety of income levels that'll be utilizing those spaces, so you have a very broad mix of people, and I think that that's a very healthy thing as well. I like the change of location, I think going to Center Point makes a lot of sense. I think the reason why it wasn't originally considered for that is we already had a project approved for the north side that didn't end up happening. This proposal was put out originally as a response to a proposal for the south portion of the Shopko lot, and that's why they had their original design. When that earlier project wasn't going to occur, it seemed to make sense for that to shift to the north side, and I think that is a better place for it. It does keep the Main Street area available for things that might be more conducive to Main Street. I like the fact that it will increase accessibility to daycare. As a former educator, I know that daycare is a major issue in a lot of communities, including ours. I like the fact that it will probably have a, it has, gives us the opportunity to develop even stronger working relationship with the university, I think there's a lot to be gained by that. So, there's a lot of pluses, and I, do I think it's a perfect plan? I don't know that a perfect plan exists. I do think it's a much better plan than what we originally saw. It is something that the city, I think, will benefit from, and I will be supporting this.
Any other thoughts? Or a motion?
I would move approval of the project as presented.
Proposal 1?
Proposal 1. Well, that's the one we've presented, yes.
So, sure, you're right. I just wanted to be very clear on that. Proposal 1 maintains, correctly, what, is 72 parking spots? 76 parking spots?
56.
And it also requires a greater incentive on the city to make that work. I really like what Alder Person Keemer said in closed session, we're subsidizing the parking portion of that, and that's what it is, because parking is that important. We understand that downtown. So, the motion is to approve the proposal that keeps the parking with a higher incentive.
Correct.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Broderick. Discussion on the motion for council.
I guess...
You okay?
I will just add something. Yeah, essentially, we were given two proposals. One was more expensive, the one that, you know, the motion is, been presented to move forward on, one was a kind of modest reduction with less parking and less incentive and less cost overall to the city, and I think overall, that was the one that made the most financial sense to me. I have heard over and over the parking concerns about downtown, and so, I think, given the rest of council's sort of movement in that direction, I guess it was difficult for me to kind of move towards that other proposal. In it, so, I guess, I guess one of the other things I want to keep in mind, that I think has been brought up in closed session, I don't know if they've been brought this out publicly, is that there's a tremendous amount of environmental cleanup that's needed on this site to do any development. And in order to get the funding and the grants to pursue any of that cleanup, we need a project too. And that, the way it's been explained to me by staff is that this project will give us a better chance at getting the grant funding to clean up the site and move forward that, with that development. And that, just having the site stay vacant, you know, yes, it prevents, or presents a lot of available parking, but that also comes at a cost to downtown, just having vacant storefronts, vacant commercial space, vacant development, that's not part of, that's not enriching the tax base, that's not bringing tax money into the bid, into the city, bringing people there. I do have concerns about the cost of this, but at the same time, I think, yeah, there's a number of benefits to be had, and so, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sure. Where am I gonna begin here? The net deficit is my big concern here that I'm looking at. We've talked at length about how this project, if you, if you just take the project without the financials attached to it, checks a lot of boxes that we've been talking about as a community for a long time, about things we need. The mixed income level housing, somebody asked if we had enough space to put in a transit center when this is done, that's still there. The concerns I have, though, is just that incentive ratio, and I understand that's, why it's so big is because we're trying to address the parking concerns. That's one of the big reasons why that incentive ratio ends up getting that high. But, at the same time, I feel that this, it's not financially sound enough of a project for us as the city. Like, when we're putting that much into the deficit annually, I'm not sure if the benefits outweigh what sort of cost that's gonna be, or that investment to the community here. I'd need to see, let's say, a little bit more, say, community support for it, for me to go, all right, we can spend that kind of money, we can get, I would say, a little bit more, say, taking on a little bit more debt annually to this. And as, I believe it was Kornowski was the one that stated, is like, these things need to be able to stand on their own. And, this is one of these plans that does not, and we do not have a plan in front of us that does yet. And as much as I want to see something happen down there, we need to get something going, I don't believe this is it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, just some final thoughts from me. This is expensive. It's a burden on the taxpayers, it's a burden on the city, but this body has been trying to get its hands around housing affordability for longer than some of you have been on here. We have repeatedly stated that we want to make housing affordability a priority, including a resolution introduced by you, Alder Person, to make housing affordability a priority. That comes at a cost. If this cost is too high to fix your affordability goals, so be it. But, this is what, this is what we have. Every affordable project, someone is subsidizing. If they're not subsidizing it, it's not going to be an affordable housing project. So, that's your policy decision before you, is where are your priorities? So, with that, we have a motion to approve Proposal 1, which includes a larger incentive, but minimally impacts the available parking, providing 76 spots on-site. If you are in favor of that, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to that, you will vote no, and we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Uzi?
Aye.
Lang?
No.
Shuda?
No.
Steinmetz?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Ann Christiansen?
Aye.
Six to two?
One, two, three, four, five, six to two.
Six to two, that is approved and will move forward. I would ask anybody from downtown to stick around, because the next item affects you just as much as this one. So, that will go forward to the redevelopment authority, I believe. Item number six is discussion and possible action on a grant to partnering together Portage County or a subsidiary entry entity to purchase 2854 Church Street for the purpose of operating a 365-day homeless shelter. Many of you downtown business owners and users understand the challenges that we face downtown with the homeless population. A lot of that stems from the services that are offered downtown. Francisiskins is downtown, the library is downtown with free Wi-Fi and warming areas, public spaces downtown to hang out, the warming center at night is downtown. And, we've been working on that, trying to figure out a way where we can address the needs of that population, while still addressing the concerns of the downtown business owners, residents, and users. The chief of police and I, along with Officer Radzik, had been working on, trying to come up with something since May, April or May of this year, starting out, trying to figure out what we can do. And it seemed obvious that the goal would be to provide a facility that offers 365 days of services as a congregating place, and providing the services that that population is used to having. A place for meals, a place to hang out, a place to charge your phone, and those sorts of things. So, we started looking at what facilities were available. We didn't own any of them, so none of them became public, it was all just kind of exploratory at that point. We looked at several facilities over the past nine months or so, that's not even including the stuff we looked at and other groups looked at prior to that. We found a couple of locations that seemed practical, and we started exploring those, getting evaluations done with our inspection department, what would we need to do to fix this and make it occupiable and so on, and whether or not it would be available at some sort of reasonable cost. We knew all along, or at least thought all along, that there would be some sort of city contribution in this, because this is a community problem. So, it certainly makes sense that the community is a partner in whatever solution that is. We had whittled them down one by one, and eventually landed on 2854 Church Street, which some of you may know as a former Oddfellows Building. It's a very unassuming building on the south side, just south of the tobacco outlet, kind of across the street from the Church Street Station and the laundromat, and just down the road from Save-A-Lot Grocery Store. It's on a bus route. It's set back a little bit from the street, it's not, it's a, it was a former fraternal organization, so there's not a lot of windows in there. Like I said, it's very unassuming. So, we started looking at that, what would it take? Had a pretty ample backyard, not a lot of neighbors, even though it's in a residential neighborhood, but as part of the protection for that neighborhood, we talked about needing some sort of screening fence. So, we started looking at that, and trying to find groups that would be willing to run it. The city had really no business being in that business, and there were plenty of other nonprofit groups that already provide services that could have the capacity to run a facility like that. of members of other groups, including One Big Tent and a few others. Alder Person Christensen had been going to those meetings as well. And we landed on that building. So what would it take to get that building to meet all the codes to be a 365 shelter? You also probably remember that the chief and I had also proposed the no camping ordinance that we said we'd bring back once we created a 365 shelter. We don't want to say you can't do it without providing an alternative for people to go to. So we started working with the group. We wound up having our inspectors sit at a table. They hired a guy or got an architect to work with them. We figured out what we needed, including sprinklers, additional restroom facilities, shower facilities, that included the potential of an increased line, main line coming into the building to cover the minimum required PSI for the sprinkler heads. A lot of technical stuff that took a long time before we could make an offer on the building. We did, however, talk to the owner, and they were supportive of utilizing that building for a 365 homeless shelter and willing to work something out. So once we got everything in line there, the architectural drawings were tentatively okayed by our inspection department, meeting all the state requirements, we had a bit of a time trying to figure out what's this going to cost to make these modifications. That eight-foot fence around most of the property was about $22,000. Installing the sprinkler systems was a significant expense, the plumbing work, I think there was some HVAC and air handler things that had to be addressed. We're well over $50,000. Well, before this group would start raising money, they wanted some sort of commitment that we had a place. So once we got the numbers for what was required to bring the building up to code to house such a facility, I then went back to the owner and explained to them what we found. We have a tentative verbally agreed upon sale price of about $150,000, which is just slightly under what the building is valued at in its current state. So then we're talking about how we can make this work. Partnering Together's business model, if you will, is working with the Franciscans, bringing the Franciscan services down to the new facility, and working with One Big Tent and some other facilities. And President Christensen can speak a little bit more on that since he was involved in those business operation meetings. But what we have before us is a request for the city's commitment to provide a grant for Partnering Together to purchase 2854 Church Street for the purposes of a 365-day shelter. City would stay out of the chain of custody on the deed. We would, Partnering Together would buy the building. We would provide the payment for that building with a contingency in an agreement with Partnering Together that should it cease operations as a homeless facility, that it would revert back to the city. And then, of course, we'd go to after the other group that had volunteered to run it. The city's goal is not to run a homeless shelter, but rather be the catalyst for some of the multitudes of nonprofits that are already providing services to run those shelters. We just are the catalyst for that, providing a facility. So what you have before you is a request to approve that grant with Partnering Together in the amount of $150,000 for the purposes of purchasing 2854 Church Street, and the intent is to use that as a homeless shelter. Now, we don't need action today because I realize that for most people, this is the first they're hearing about it. But I would like action soon because in order for Partnering Together to facilitate operations prior to or at April 1st, which is when the current evening warming center closes, and be ready April 1st for operations, they need time, first of all, the owner needs time to clear their personal property out of the building, and then Partnering Together needs time to not only raise funds, but find a contractor, get the contractor to do all the work that's required prior to that opening. So while it's not a rush need, every day we delay is a delay on the backend a little bit further. So what I would ask for, after we take some public comment, is authorization to enter into an offer to purchase with the owner of the building for this purpose in the amount of $150,000. I would meet with Alder Person Boosie and any constituents that wanted to meet sometime prior to December 15th, which is our regular council meeting. And hopefully by December 15th, we will have all of the details worked out, give the public plenty of time to evaluate the proposal that we have, and then look for a final decision to go ahead and approve that grant on December 15th. That in a nutshell is what the police chief, myself, Officer Ratzek, President Christensen, everyone at Partnering Together, One Big Tent, and a host of other people have been working on behind the scenes to try and make this happen, to alleviate some of the, I'm going to call it a burden, downtown with a certain population. Once we have an agreement, we expect to bring back the no camping ordinance and expect council support on providing that ordinance because there will be rules here just like anywhere else. And if there are segments of that population that either cannot or will not follow the rules, we need some sort of authority to, to deal with the issue. Right? So that's where we're going. And at this point, I would open it up to any member of the public who wishes to comment on this, one way or the other, and let us know your thoughts because I know this has been a hot button issue for a lot of people. Jerry, come on up. I don't believe we're going to need a lot of parking spots, just so you know.
You never know, Mike.
That's true, you never know. Bike racks, absolutely.
Jerry Farner again, Executive Place. I commend you a few paths this. I've been dealing with this problem in my building, not so much during open hours, but closed hours. And some of the stories that I have, I'm not even going to tell you. So I think you're making a move in the right direction. I just looked on Zillow, it's like 4,000 square feet, should supply a lot of room. That you have zero now. So I'm good with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. BJ Welling, downtown building owner, again. I also commend you guys in working on this. I've been following this issue for quite a while, and I've learned more about the details of this, and it seems like this is a solution that can work. So thanks for that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Deb Knippel, Frame Presbyterian Church, Main Street, and Citizen, 611 Sumeri. So you've heard me before. So I think this is wonderful. I've just started my fourth winter season volunteering with the warming center, and I am a member of Frame, and we do provide that space, but it is not ideal. We're limited to the number of people we can take, and we do the best we can, and people are taken care of, which is wonderful. So I think we're at a point right now where there's just a lot of people really have come together to address the issue of the unhoused, as well as just the whole housing issue in general. But this would be a wonderful way for the city to contribute, and I think we would solve a lot of issues, and it would be appropriate and make a lot of people happy. And our unhoused would be in a much better environment. So I would support this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to say, you're walking a little bit better. He had to throw that in there.
A little better. 100% support for this idea. The girl that works for me called me yesterday at 5:00, and I had people requesting to sleep in my alcove, which I contacted the police department months ago, and anybody camping there is going to be trespassed. So thank you. It's about time. We need to do something. And, yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. I should point out, too, that we've been working on this for quite a while, behind the scenes, so it's not like we're throwing this out on a public billboard. But this won't solve our issue. This will solve some pieces of it and some symptoms of it. The camping, no camping ordinance will solve some other pieces. And I can, I can guess right now, because I dabble in that social media thing, and I can see, I can already predict what's going to happen. This is not going to encourage homelessness. Nobody is going to say, ooh, I got a free place to hang out during the day now, so I'm going to quit my job and become homeless. Will it attract people? It might, but there's going to be limits on this facility. We won't be able to house everyone. And this, in conjunction with the no camping ordinance, if there's no room at the end, you don't have another option. You have to be willing to follow those rules. So we're really hoping for some additional compliance with those rules as well. Because now it will become a problem if you are camping downtown or sitting at the bus stop with all of your personal belongings. The lockers, in addition to that, the intention is to move those lockers from its current location on Water Street to the 365-day shelter. So all of the services will be right there, moved out of the downtown area. Anyone else in person wishing to speak?
It's a heck of a row of chairs, huh?
Hi, Kornowski, 910 Main Street. Property owner for 31 years downtown. Business owner 31 years, on the square downtown. Thank you. I know there's a lot of logistics to work out. Make it happen. Yeah. Longevity of this project, if the initial group, if it fails, I don't know if it should reverse back to the city or another something. I think it's a project that definitely was needed many years ago, became most apparent last, you know, based on COVID-ish, right? So pass it as fast as you can. This is one ingredient I got with everybody here. Let's get it done.
Thanks, Trey. Anyone else in person? Then we're going to move to online. Anyone online wishing to speak on this? Just unmute yourself and go ahead.
Andrea Olson, 410 Franklin Street. Thank you very much for working on this. I think that the location is optimal because it also has a food pantry within a block, and their, the impact to the downtown will be great because many people have been feeling uncomfortable, which this is part of life. We need to realize that. But also, everybody has their limits with what they can handle themselves. So this isn't a solution, end-all, be-all, but is a great step in the right direction.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Yeah, Dustin Boosie, Alder District 10. I am in support of the location. I'm in support of the initiative and everything that's brought about, and appreciative of the groups, the mayor, Alder Christensen, for making this a reality. What I do want to be cognizant of, and I appreciate the mayor mentioning it, is giving the opportunity for the neighborhood that this will be going into place and giving them the time and space and ability to have discussions, have that forum, have more of a, the plan for this facility be rolled out, because ultimately, we all want to see it succeed. And I think it's important that the voices of the folks in the neighborhood are heard and that we have a rollout plan ready and able, which there's been a lot of planning in place. I have no doubt that the groups involved that have brought this to fruition have thought through a number of contingencies. There's, the mayor discussed many of them that are, have already been surfaced. So I think it's important that we recognize the neighborhood and folks that will be directly affected by the placement of this facility. But again, I do support where it's going, how it's being handled, and I want to state that folks with concerns, with questions, that they reach out, get ahold of me. We will be having a discussion within this two-week timeframe prior to having it go to council. So giving that forum that will be rolled out and formally announced in the upcoming couple of weeks. But thanks for the time.
Thank you, Alder Person. And we'll get started on this, provided council gives us the authority to go ahead today. We'll get a meeting scheduled with yourself, city staff. We'll see if we can get some members of Partnering Together there, so everybody has an opportunity to get all the questions that we can answer, answered. Alder Person Christensen, did you want to speak at all of the Partnering Together meetings that you've been attending for however long it's been?
It's been over two years. This is, I mean, it's, the problem is a major struggle. I mean, it's not easy. There's no silver bullet that's going to take care of everything. Partnering Together, I think, is bringing together a lot of groups that have that community welfare focus, and I'm very optimistic that it's going to be successful. I know, I was talking with the mayor, I think we first looked at that building over two years ago, and we've looked at other buildings in the meantime, and we've considered a lot of different possibilities. We've done a lot of research, we've talked to other communities and how they're best addressing those concerns. And one of the things consistently was, it can't be a city-led project, but it needs to be a city-supported project. And so I think we've, this, we've found a really good balance with that. The city will be providing some of this initial support, and the mayor's been very instrumental in helping us in those conversations with the building owner, and done, I think, a real good job of moving that forward. There are a lot of community partners, and you will be seeing information coming out very soon from, and you'll be able to see all the different people that are coming together to help provide some of these services. So it's been hard, it's been long, it's been a struggle, but I think we're in a pretty good place, so.
Thank you. So what I'd be looking at, Alder Persons, is a motion to proceed with agreements to purchase 2854 Church Street and authorize working on an agreement with Partnering Together for acquisition of that property, subject to another public meeting in conjunction with Partnering Together and Alder Person Boosie, with final consideration given at the December 15th council meeting.
So moved.
That's a long motion. But basically, thank you, Alder Person Lang. We're going to, we're authorizing staff to proceed with the documentation and the agreements, subject to final approval on the 15th. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, second to my Keimer.
Second.
Oh.
We've got less.
Too slow. Alder Keimer's got the second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none. If you're in favor of it, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Christensen?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Steinmetz?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
And Boosie?
Aye.
By unanimous consent, that is approved. Our agenda is exhausted, and we are adjourned at 3, I'm sorry, 2:35. Thank you all very much for coming.